delivery drones, yeah.
Please rise for the pledge. Angela, roll call please.
Counselor Osper.
Present.
Counselor Bronson.
Present.
Counselor Hegi.
Present.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
President Pro Tem Thorstad.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
President, let the record show that there are seven present and no, none absent. Before we get started into this work session, I just wanted to say that I believe this is the most important duty that we have as counselors of the entire year. Besides passing the budget is to set goals that we can then get behind and make policies that support the goals. So I'm hoping we can all work together and come up with some great ideas of how we can benefit our community. And I just want to say too, that we've had some good things happen in the last year in the city of Sweet Home. And also that this survey that was put out, I know there was some confusion about it and where it was available. It was put on Facebook multiple times, but it was also handed out at the senior center. The school got ahold of it, which I thought was really cool, that they chose to use it in their government classes. There were some city, um, school staff that also completed it. The senior center gave it out. It was handed out at the Harvest Festival. It was handed out at different public events. And we got 399 responses. And I just thought before we got started, I would let you know a little bit of the comments that were made, just highlights. But I can email this to, well, Cecily has a copy actually. She can email it to any counselor if you request, or if you would like that. And you'll have all the answers of what they said, but cleanliness was one of the biggest topics that was mentioned in the survey. Out of 399, 398 surveys, cleanliness was mentioned 120 times. Clean streets, clean roads, clean atmosphere. Homelessness was mentioned 159 times, but it wasn't just like they didn't like the homelessness. Some of it was please help the homelessness. The vacant downtown buildings was mentioned 204 times. That's more than 50% of the people that completed the survey are concerned about the downtown vacant buildings. Also sidewalks was mentioned and bringing in entertainment like bowling and roller skating and miniature golf. Places for youth to hang out. So I just thought I'd give a highlight of that and we can get that out to people if they'd like to see the results of that. But then I'm going to hand it over to city staff to go over what we're going to do today in this work session.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. So just to set the stage, we are approaching goal setting a little bit differently this year. I know the last two years, we did it in one session and it was kind of a free for all, which that was a great exercise. But I, I think before that, we were more closely aligned with the city's mission statement. So I'm hoping to bring us back to that this year and we're also breaking this up into two potential sessions. So that you all have the chance to have some initial discussion today. And if there's any information you're seeking from staff about programs, capacity about potential goals that you want to propose, we'll have two weeks to come back and bring that back to you in two weeks. So just to begin, you do have two handouts in front of you. And then in your digital packet, you do have the vision and mission statement. So first I'm going to go over the current city manager and city council goals. I'm not going to go line by line, just because I want to be respectful of time. And all of this is also available on our website through a link to monday.com and these are updated monthly. But you can see the city manager goals for this current fiscal year. They're about 50% done and those were set internally by staff this past year. And then city council goals, you'll see on here that they are organized by the five buckets, but that was not how it was done during the goal setting session. That's just how they were entered once staff received the goals. So again, this year I'm hoping council will be a little bit more intentional about looking at those five buckets and trying to put some goals in some better distributed categories there. Just a few things to highlight, obviously infrastructure was our most popular category this current year. A lot of those items are potentially on hold due to funding. A lot of those are dependent on grants or donations. So that's why you're not seeing any of those completed. Some of those will be completed for sure. Others we're having to assess just based on budget and staff capacity. Under effective and efficient government, we had done a, an initial work session to do council rule updates and we received no feedback from council. But that was last year, so we are planning another work session in April to revisit that item to see if there are any desired changes going into the next fiscal year. For essential services, Chief Ogden did complete the continuity of operations plan. So that, that's that one that's completed. We are still working on potential site options for the new library. So if so desired, that would be one that could easily roll over into next year. And then economic strength, so downtown vacancy, obviously Ridgeway Health is currently occupying Old City Hall. The city also purchased the feed store last year. There has been a little bit of interest, but we're still identifying potential options for filling that. In terms of design standards for downtown, we did again, have a work session last year and there were no recommendations as a result of that. So if that's something council, now that there's been some turnover, would like to revisit, we're certainly open to having that conversation again. Land acquisition, again, we acquired the feed store and then there have been a few grants that we've already acquired and we are constantly applying for new ones. So with that one, I think it's up to you if you want to keep it as a rollover, but staff will operate with that as a constant goal, regardless of whether you formalize it or not. And then city marketing plan, we had looked into some strategic planning options, ultimately decided those were not the right choice for the city right now, based on the budgets, but we're having some other conversations with some other entities that might still be able to help with that in a more cost effective way. So before I move on from this, are there any questions about these projects on the current year? Okay. If not, then I'm going to move on to your other handout. So this is a very early draft of the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. So you'll see the project title, if there are any status or notes, there aren't notes for all of them. Just because again, it's still in draft status, a very high level summary of what the project is. And then you'll see fiscal 24, 25. So that's what was programmed for this year and the status of those. And then it goes into a five to six-year plan, just based on staff input. And we also made sure to go through our master plans because several of those were recently adopted. So this had some significant changes that were the previous one, based on the water master plan, the storm water master plan, the TSP, which is almost done, and the parks master plan. And again, this is draft level, but if you, again, infrastructure has been very popular for goal setting. So this can help inform that. Or if you have other projects that you have feedback on that you want to see as prioritized, that can also inform the CIP or your goals. So this is just for you to look at. I can also send this out digitally because I know it's very small. So, and I know you probably haven't had time to read through all of it, but if you have any questions, basically I'm going to give you all a little bit of time to review these. And then I would actually, I'm going to read out the five aspirations under the mission statement. And then I would like to give you guys a little bit of free time to start thinking about some goals that you think would fit under those. And I'd like you to just write them on the board. There are no bad choices and it's okay if they're very broad right now. That's the point of having two sessions. So I know for example, last year there was a push to get done in one session. So enhanced livability was suggested as a goal. And staff was like, no, you need to drill that down. Yes, you need to drill that down, but I want to give you guys a couple of weeks to think about things. In case, yeah, I really want to prioritize livability. I just don't know what that looks like today. And then staff can come back with suggestions if you need those as well. So unless there are any questions about these or the exercise, I will give you guys probably, let's say 20 minutes to look through your materials, start suggesting things. Obviously feel free to have conversations amongst yourselves. I know it's a work session, so it's a little bit less formal. I'll check in with you guys around six. And then if we need to have a discussion about what's going to happen in two weeks, or if you need a little bit more time, we can do that as well. So with that, I'm just going to read out the five. So we aspire to have an effective and efficient local government. We aspire to create an economically strong environment in which businesses prosper. We aspire to provide viable and sustainable essential services. We aspire to provide viable and sustainable infrastructure. And we aspire to make Sweet Home a community people find desirable to live in. So I'm asking this year, you try to focus your goals under those five buckets. But that can be anything from again, infrastructure to a plan that you want to see, to a partnership that you want us to create, to ways to support needs in our parks or on our streets in terms of cleanup or something like that. I really want you guys to kind of dream big and then we're going to drill down and kind of see where the popular items are. So with that, you have, yes. In terms of the goals? Correct. Well, so that's, that's why I want to do it a little bit differently this year. So for example, with the infrastructure, if there are things on here that you want to see roll over, not a problem. But again, having the two week break will give staff the opportunity to identify if there are more challenges that we need to explain, or if we need to, to show you how feasible it is to get it done in the next fiscal year, this will give us time to come back with that feedback. Correct.
That's a five-year plan and it's like one of the most important things, in my opinion, of course, you're in the city. So, but you work on a one-year plan, so. So I'm a little wondering how, how do you want this put in with the things that are continuation of things that are, that have already been started?
So again, that's up to you. If you want to formal, so for example, with the wastewater treatment plant, I know previously the single year goal had been commence construction. Obviously we haven't commenced construction yet. We're hoping to do that next fiscal year and you can kind of see that reflected in the CIP as well, which is why I wanted to give you the draft CIP. So you can kind of be looking ahead and saying, yes, this is a priority for me. Or no, this is not a priority for me and I want you to look at something else. So for example, you'll see for fiscal 25, 26, going into fiscal 26, 27, we have finalizing construction, commencing construction for that project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's sort of, it's just, I mean, it's a, I guess you put the stage down. So we didn't get a start last year, but there's, there's situations and criterias and needs of the system that it may not, you know, be able to happen if there's things not in place that are beyond the control of the city and the city staff.
Correct. And so that's the other reason that.
That's kind of, that's one of the things we pushed out, like number one priority, but well, now you gotta have this, this and this is first.
Right.
Which are unknown.
And so again, that's why I want to have the two week period so that we can come back and really set the stage for whatever you guys identified tonight, that we can give you a realistic expectation for. Can we actually get this done next fiscal year? Or do we need steps one, two, before we can even get to number three, which is your proposed goal?
Yeah, because a lot of these are, they're multi-year.
Yes.
So maybe express as year one, year two.
And that can be a broader policy conversation too, if city council would like to start proposing multi-year goals and adopting multi-year goals versus the single fiscal year.
Well, in, in my vision of the city, it's, it's not just about one year. This is 20 years.
Correct.
That's, you know, if you get 20 years, you, you gotta get that out that you're doing 20 years and get your vision out to then start putting the pieces in.
Right. And so I think, I think the way that it's been envisioned in the past is your city council and city manager goals. That's your one year, your one fiscal year. You have your CIP, your capital plan, that's your five-year, and then you have your master plans, which are typically your 20-year. So it's the combination of those that set the stage for near, mid and long-term future.
These are like aspirational and we can only take small bites. And so that's what you were saying earlier, dream big and then figure out how we can take small bites over time to hopefully achieve this giant vision.
Yes.
But to not be limited to what we can only accomplish in a year, if we can even accomplish it at all. Just what's our vision as elected officials for this community?
Yes.
Well said.
Oh, and we do have cookies. Do you need snacks?
So Cecily, you said you were going to give us 20 minutes to go over in our head and then you're going to come back to us or?
If you can in the next 20 minutes, take time to review these, but then also please start putting some, some items on the boards.
Like what we would personally ask for?
Yes.
Okay. Cecily, in regards to the goals from this last year, if through this process, some of the ones that are being worked on do not appear for this next fiscal year, are they still going to be completed or are they?
So it will depend on, on the project. Obviously we'd love to accomplish all of these, but for example, again, infrastructure was such a large ask and there were four different park projects. Capacity wise, staff would not recommend that going into this next fiscal year. All of these things are still components of the park plan. So they'll eventually make it on the CIP if they're not already proposed on the CIP, but there is a chance that some of these will not get done due to funding.
That clarification. Can I ask a question? So I thought for the Eighth Avenue Water Main Replacement, maybe Greg, you know, I thought we set aside ARPA funds for that. Am I remembering incorrectly? And that got shifted somewhere else?
Those ARP funds did get spent, I think, on that project. And the ARP is funds have already, they're already, they've already been, gone.
Right. So is that the part that's being worked on? Cause it says under reconsideration for the Eighth Avenue Water Main Replacement?
Are you thinking ARPA was spent on Ninth? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Not Eighth, Ninth, sorry.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so with the approval of the new water master plan, in talking with staff, we were thinking Eighth Avenue would not be a priority for the CIP, but again, this is the time to get that feedback from council.
And just to add too, I think in our discussions as a team, I think the project that rises to the top is that generator project. And it's a big price tag. So.
So is that funding tied to the new administration and it's in limbo or?
For the generator?
Yeah.
So as far as we know, that funding is still in place. However, and we didn't know this because we were not involved in the application, that funding is just to procure the generators themselves. There's an additional almost $1 million price tag to install just at the water treatment plant. So we are currently seeking additional funding for that installation, which is why you'll see it phased on the CIP.
Did you, did you guys submit that to the state?
We did. I submitted it to the state, the congressional spending request. And then also I'm submitting it to Bynum's office as well. So.
Is there emergency funding available in a different bucket somewhere? Cause somebody told me that we could apply for.
We can certainly look into that because we're, that again, that's from staff's perspective, the highest priority water project at this point is to, to fund that installation.
That's one of mine too, is whatever's been happening with our water, making sure that we're ready for it to happen again and prepared for even worse. So.
And feel free to propose as many as you want, because we will have an exercise where you all will mark all of the ones that you would rank as your top priorities.
They go under strength?
Economic.
Down a one-way, you go down a one-way, you back into it, right? No. It's crazy.
So Cecily, is the WFI pending for what reason? Is that attached to federal funding with the new administration?
So that's pending because we're still catching up with our last audit. And once that's completed, we do have to secure a new credit rating. But we have submitted our, our, we are pre-approved and we actually submitted our application fee already. So that is still moving forward.
But is that money attached to what everybody's concerned about not realizing or is that set separate?
We have not heard that there is a freeze on that.
Okay.
Of course, anything could happen, but so far with that and with the EDA fund, we have not heard of any.
We haven't heard anything, but my opinion is, is that since it is EPA funds water projects and they, they fund wastewater project, those are enterprise funds. Those are being repaid back. It's not like it's just money being thrown out to somebody. So I'm hoping that EPA keeps their loan offices going, because that's basically what it is. And it's the same if, you know, the federal government then passes money through the state revolving fund here in Oregon. And you can go through USDA as well. We're going through WFI, which is straight EPA. I would imagine since it's a repay and it's a business type, it's not just giving money away that my hope is it's not affected.
So this is, this is adding new things to our goals?
So this would be going into next fiscal year.
Whoa. If we want anything on this list?
Put it up.
Oh.
Please.
Cecily, as council comes up with goals, staff will have their own set of goals too?
Yeah. So this year we decided to reverse the process a little bit and let city council inform us what they would like to see first. And then based on the capacity that we deem as left, we'll set the city manager goals with staff.
Great. There's some things that I've not put up there because I'm anticipating they're still going to be completed. So.
You don't need to.
Probably sustainable essential services. For effective and efficient.
Wanted to put revenue up there, but seems to be not a hot topic.
Awesome. Keep it in their mind the whole time, everything, revenue, revenue.
Yeah, hell, I'm gonna put it up there. Good. Hopefully it's professional. Dylan wrote, Councilor Rose. Cute. Trying to drink like eight of these a day. No, but just constantly have.
Right? I would think so.
It's like, yeah, just sugar free flavor, Crystal Light.
Okay, so has everyone felt like they had enough time to get what they wanted on the boards? Okay, so now all of you should have a roll of stickers at your station. I'd like you to go around, read everybody's and sticker your top three in each category.
So many, why we have so many stickers of all three? Yeah, how's that going? Are we getting any replies?
Next time?
Yeah, anything sugar free good for you? Cause I'm gonna die. Obviously, Angelina does too. Does anything with no sugar? Yeah, carrots and ranch would have been good.
Picky monsters.
I'm really trying not to give into the temptation.
And I'm fit at a desk now and. But thank you, Cecily. Uh, chocolate, wine.
Lunch meats and, lunch meats and cheese, lunch meats and cheese. Meats and cheese, yeah.
Protein. We'll be less hangry.
I can go for like a, I can go for like a cauliflower crust pizza. That would be okay.
They do.
Spallettos.
Spallettos does.
Susan.
Is it? It's kind of crazy, but I make mine out of chicken. And the air fryer, yeah. It's really thin chicken and they make pizza on top of it. Great protein. And it's good. And the, and the, uh, air fryer. Oh, well then get a bigger one. Rookie.
So do all of the stickers at each of the 20-year plan get added together is the question I have.
Well, I actually have a question about the 20-year plan. Can you explain a little more, Councilor Bronson, what you want to see in a 20-year plan? Are you thinking strategic plan? Are you thinking comprehensive plan? All of the above? Okay. Can you use some mic?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Hey, City of Independence, what the City of Independence has done in the last 25 years, that's what we have, that's what we need to start if you're gonna, you have to know where you're going to get there. We need a 20-year plan.
So it sounds like.
And all of this is included, so.
Okay. That's the.
And have you ever sat down on some of their training sessions? Very good, so.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, so can I say something to all of this too? I was talking to Chief, when we go and request funds for these projects, a lot of time we have to have buy-in. And so take that into consideration when we want to get all of these things done. How much buy-in are we going to come to the table with when we try to have a budget? To consider priorities and how much money we can afford to set aside to go chasing funding?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just gonna, can you hear me with this one? Okay, I'm just gonna walk around and see if I have any other questions, because I can't read all of it from over there. Okay. So I'm probably just gonna choose everything with three or more stickers. And staff will come back with a memo with details on those. So here for effective and efficient local government, I'm seeing monthly newsletter, increased notifications, electronic to citizens, and cybersecurity review of key infrastructure. Those were all very popular. Economically strong environment for businesses, looks like self-revenue, okay, so revenue streams, 24th Avenue Railroad Crossing, the Saniam Feed Store. What are we doing with Old City Hall? Those are all that had three or more. Okay, no questions there. For viable and sustainable essential services, East Wing renovations, emergency plan updates. So for that one, we did complete the coop, so are we wanting to see a whole new revised emergency plan as well? I can't remember who was blue. Okay, so just another review of our emergency document, okay. 20-year plan and technology upgrades for the library. What does that look like? What kind of tech are we looking for?
Well, when I asked, we just don't have funding for the technology at this time because that money was frozen.
Okay.
And so there's needs for technology in the library that we could maybe set aside some money for.
I just didn't know if there was something specific you were looking for.
But better computers.
Okay.
Okay. More computers, more access.
Okay, that's helpful. Viable and sustainable infrastructure, so it looks like we have purchase paver and roller for staff to fix streets in-house. Mountain View Road Multi-Use Path and Sidewalks. Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One. Okay, those are pretty straightforward. And then for desirable community, we have Weddell Bridge, marketing plan or PR campaign, downtown vacancy, conversation with landlords. And that's, okay. Well, it looks like we have some pretty clear tops in each of the categories. So are there any questions about those priorities? If not, then I will direct staff to get working on a memo to get some more details about those, then we'll come back in two weeks. And I'll probably ask you to pare down a little bit more because that's a lot. And hopefully you can make an informed decision based on staff info.
Well, and that's not including anything that we already had existing, so this is getting scrapped and then we're going.
It's not getting scrapped. We do still want to accomplish these things if possible. And some of these things, if they don't roll over on council, we'll consider it for rollover on, on manager goals as well. So are there any questions about any of those?
Thank you, Cecily. That was very helpful. Thank you for everybody's participation. I think we're looking forward to seeing what the memo will say and working again on this next, in two weeks. So thank you, everybody. Let's close out this work session at 6:14 and then we'll come back for council.